Good evening. My name is Andrew LaPointe, a sitting member of the Cable Television Committee, publicly known as Dyton TV9. In partnership with this station, the Town of Dyton YouTube Channel, and the Friends of the Dyton Public Library, we proudly present to you the 2021 Meet the Candidates Night. The following topics may be controversial and/or political in nature. The opinions expressed during the following program are strictly those of the participants and speaking members of the public and do not reflect the views of the Town of Dyton, Dyton TV9, its management, or directors. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Andrew. Good evening, everyone, and I just want to take a moment to thank you for attending our annual Meet the Candidates Night here for 2021. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic that's facing our nation, this event is being held remotely via Zoom, and it's also being streamed live simultaneously on the Town of Dyton YouTube Channel during the event. It will also be replayed on Channel 9 at a later date. For those of you that do not know me, my name is Zach LaPointe, and I am the chairperson for the Friends of the Dyton Public Library, who sponsored the event. The annual Dyton Town election is being held on Saturday, April 10, 2021, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Dyton Elementary School. The following individuals are on the ballot for the 2021 annual election. For Board of Selectmen, we have Jennifer Dutchkowski of 2414 County Street in Dyton. We have Leonard Hall Jr. of 760 Main Street, Dyton. For Town Moderator, we have Gary Scott Dingus of 1780 Smith Street in Dyton, who is a candidate for reelection. For the Dyton Rehoboth Regional School Committee, we have Glenn Jefferson of 270 Hillcrest Drive in Dyton, who is a candidate for reelection. And we also have Thomas O'Connor III, who is a candidate for reelection, who resides at 2664 Portland Road in Dyton. For Planning Board, we have Christopher E. Cunha of 380 Country Hill Drive. In North Dyton, for Library Trustee, we have Arujo, who lives at 1423 William Street in Dyton, Mass. And we also have, under Library Trustee, we have Ann Meitz, who resides at 3091 Huntress Hill Drive in Dyton. For Sewer Commissioner, we have Tom Ferry, who is a candidate for reelection. He resides at 1070 William Street. For Dyton Housing Authority, we have Edward Olney, who is a candidate for reelection. He resides at 883 Prospect Street in North Dyton. For Parks and Recreation Commissioner, we have Kevin Smith of 1147 Center Street in Dyton. And for Tree Warden, again, we have Tom Ferry. Here's how this event is going to work tonight. Each candidate, after I finish going over the rules, will have three minutes to introduce themselves to the audience. In the audience tonight is one of our Friends members, Patricia Gales, who will be timing you and will inform me when your time is up. After all introductions, we will go to questions from the audience. Audience members, please put your questions in the chat box on Zoom, and I will be asking the questions tonight. Please be sure, when you put your question in the chat box, that you put your name and your address in the chat as well, for the record, please. Once we get to the question stage, candidates will have one minute to answer questions from the audience, and during that time also Pat will be timing you during the event. So, thank you, everybody. Let's get started. So, let's get started with introductions. First is Jennifer Dutchkowski. And I'm going to ask that everybody who's not speaking remain muted.
Thanks, Zach. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Thank you so much for hosting this. I'm always grateful to the Friends of the Library for holding this event. It's a great way for folks in town to get to know who is on their ballot. My relationship formally with the Town of Dyton started about a decade ago, but it really started much earlier than that. When I was a small child, maybe middle school age or so, my dad used to bring me over to what is now the Dyton Elementary School cafetorium, because he played in a men's basketball league, and he played games on that wooden floor. And I remember sitting there as the men thundered up and down the court playing basketball. Crossing that one-lane bridge was always very interesting and waiting for our turn to go across. Then later, in 2002, I started working for the Old Colony YMCA, doing the before-and-after school care program at Dyton Elementary School. So, again, I got to experience the town and the townspeople, and really, really loved the town and the atmosphere. After that, if you fast-forward to 2010, we had an apartment fire. We were living in a sonnet, Massachusetts, and we lost much of what we had at the time. We were taken in by a wonderful family member who resides in Dyton, and it happened to be in the wintertime, and this town embraced us and gave my two small children a Christmas that year that otherwise they would not have had. You know, while we were living in Dyton, under the care of a family member, we were able to take our first-time homebuyers class. We were able to search for a house and ultimately settle in Dyton. And all of this is to tell you that I have a deep desire to pay forward the kindness and service this town has shown to me and my family. I was raised to love and respect my community, knowing that the most important work is done by volunteers who care about the community. They care enough to step up, give up time, and rise to the occasion, giving up their time and their talent. This was instilled so strongly in me that service is really my mission at heart. And especially to this town. I have been constantly searching since I moved here for different ways that I can serve this community. I started by serving on the Cultural Commission when I was asked to do so. I have served on the Friends of the Dyton Public Library. I have served as a Girl Scout volunteer. I have recently been serving with the Commission on Disabilities, and really, I would find any way that I can to serve this town. I'd be really happy to serve you folks in the upcoming years, to be elected on April 10th. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jen. Next is Selectman Candidate Leonard Hall.
Good evening. My name is Leonard Hall, and I'm a candidate for the Board of Selectmen. My grandparents, Murray and Manuel Costa, moved here from Portugal at the beginning of the 20th century. Both of my parents were born in Dyton. My Uncle Ray Costa served as DPW Director. My brother, Tim Costa, served for nearly two decades on the fire department here. I purchased my home on Main Street, 1985. I like Dyton's country setting, and the town services provided by its employees are excellent. I also have a deep desire to serve, as reflected by my work with the St. Joseph's-St. Nicholas Church, that I've been a part of since 1958, Friends of the Library, and as a member of the DR Regional School Committee. It is essential that communication improve within government and to its citizens here in Dyton. Online communication, although nice, is intimidating for some, especially for seniors. I'd like to help develop neighborhood action groups. It would open better lines of communication between themselves and town officials. I would also like to develop stronger partnerships with neighboring towns such as Berkeley, Somerset, and Rehoboth. Diversity issues have polarized Dyton. I have a plan that would change the focus away from Town Hall and place the organizational diversity of a diversity for organizational development of a diversity forum in the hands of private citizens, and supported possibly by business. Seniors, the time has come for us to focus on more affordable housing for our seniors, which will also help us meet our 40B housing requirement. We need to offer developers incentives to entice them to develop senior housing. I'd like to see the zoning, planning, and building department work together to create this incentive program. There's also a need to increase the senior tax exemption program so that more seniors qualify. For decades, Dyton has reacted to proposed developments instead of been proactive. 40B gives developers a huge negotiating advantage. Open Space Committee, Community Preservation, ZBA, Conservation, Planning, and the Building Department need to create strategies and amass the plan for Dyton's future growth. I'd also like to see the implementation of an impact fee to be assessed to all developers for all future housing developments in town. The Main Street Fire Station has both structural and spacing issues. There's a real need to form a focus group to develop recommendations and a timeline for upgrading the station before project costs skyrocket. The key to brighter future for Dyton is to bring people together for the common good. Building partnerships both within Dyton and with our neighboring towns is crucial, and I ask for your support on Election Day, April 10th. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Leonard.
You're welcome.
Next is Gary Scott Dingus, if you're on the call.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for hosting this this evening. My name's Scott Dingus. That's what everyone knows me by. It's been my pleasure and honor to serve Town Dyton over the past several years, most recently as the Town Moderator over the last year. I look forward to continuing my service to the town. It's been my honor and pleasure to learn and grow with this town over my last 11 years living in the town, and I look forward to continuing that. So, thank you very much, everyone. Look forward to Election Day and continuing the service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott. Next on the ballot, under School Committee, will be Glenn Jefferson. Glenn, if you're on here, if you want to introduce yourself.
Yep, you can hear me very great.
Yes, I can.
Yep. Hi, everyone. My name's Glenn Jefferson, so I'm obviously seeking reelection again for the School Committee, and this will be my start of my third term. I've been born and raised here in town, never left. My mother grew up here. My father came from Taunton, so, you know, I went through the school district and all of that fun stuff. Myself, I got involved serving the town back in around the 2013-2014 timeframe with the school district, once my kids became close to its school age, and we started dealing with the budget assessment issues with the Town of Rehoboth and Dyton, and there were quite a bit of controversy and things going on, which are still happening between the Town of Dyton and Rehoboth. But I got on there, you know, I attended school committees for about two years before, seeking election when Sew Lorenz finished up, and were the primary reason of fighting and advocating for the budget and the Town of Dyton, because there are a lot of history with Rehoboth and, you know, threats of cuts and everything like that. So, it's been a nonstop battle in the past few years, as we thought it was getting easier with an override a few years back. One other thing keeps coming up, and everyone's aware of the different issues with the state mandates and funding, and I don't want to get into all those details, but that's my primary objective, is, you know, advocate for the kids of the district and, you know, advocate when we can for funding and different things. And, you know, it is good, you know, for both towns, you'll always hear me, you know, saying support the kids, but also we got to try and figure out how we balance that with the taxes, because another thing people have probably heard me say in town is our taxes in this town are quite high compared to neighboring towns. And you look at what we get now compared to, you know, previous years, even going to school, you know, kids and students have to pay for all kinds of fees and everything. When I went there, you didn't have to pay a dime for any supplies or sports or parking, but again, the cost of state mandates drive that. So, look forward to continuing servicing everyone if reelected, and just wanted to say thanks.
Thank you very much, Glenn. Next is Tom O'Connor.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity and the invite tonight. I really appreciate it. As mentioned, my name is Tom O'Connor. I live at 2664 Courtland Road in Dyton. Moved here in 2012. My wife and I moved here with our three sons after living in Worcester for 11 years, to get closer to my wife's family. When we moved here, my kids were in elementary school and kindergarten, and I was appointed to the School Committee in 2018 after his seat was vacated. And I served for six months, about six months before I was elected to the position, 2019. At that point, my sons were in fourth grade, eighth grade, and a sophomore at the high school. So, I'm aware of, you know, some of the capacity issues, especially in the elementary school. My fourth grader at the time, now the sixth grader, was in one of the classrooms that was in the library, and then moved into the modules, and it was open. So, I'm very familiar with that process and, you know, how all that took place. And I currently, my youngest is in sixth grade, and I have a sophomore and a senior about to graduate. So, I've been in the committee for about two and a half years. I currently serve as the Chair of the Committee, and I also serve on the Policy and Negotiating Subcommittee, as well as the Joint Labor, Joint Management Labor Committee, JMLC, that has worked with the Teachers Union through COVID to make sure that we address any issues that come up, as teachers are back in the building, or bringing students into the buildings, and addressing those issues to mitigate any problems with staffing and making sure that we, you know, the schools can provide the services they're supposed to provide. And I also serve as the School Committee Rep for Dyton on the Dyton Capital Outlay Committee. As I mentioned, I have my three boys in school, and, you know, I really wanted to, I've served the community or in some capacity my entire adult life since I was 18. I really wanted to be involved in town, because as Glenn mentioned, you know, as our taxes have risen, the assessment has risen, and it has drove our taxes up. I really wanted to advocate for the students of the district and try to help provide some of the things that, you know, the district is having trouble providing, also taking care of our buildings, addressing some of the capacity issues, opening good lines of communication between both towns, which, you know, we've had issues, and they're ongoing. However, I believe the communication has gotten better over the last year and a half, two years, but, you know, continue that, move towards opening those lines of communication, and ultimately making sure all the stakeholders involved, particularly with the budget, have a seat at the table when we start discussing things. And that, ultimately, the district is good stewards with the town's money, because, you know, we're a small town, especially in Dyton. We rely mostly on residents to pay the taxes and to foot the bill. So, we really want to make sure, ensure that, try to be good stewards of taxpayers' money. So, you know, really, moving forward, my main goal, as Glenn talked about, is similar to his, in addressing the budget and making sure that we're good stewards, but also to talk about those capacity issues that I mentioned, specifically in the elementary school. We're two years into modules that were designed for three to five years. So, where do we go from here with those, and what do we do as we move forward? And then, as the town grows, we're going to have more and more kids moving in, and we're going to have those issues, particularly in the elementary school and the middle school.
Exactly.
All right.
Oh, okay.
If you want to finish your thought, Tom, go ahead.
Sure. I was just going to say, the high school's got plenty of space. So, you know, we really don't have a lot of spacious issues there. However, there are some outside issues at the high school that I think we're now at a point that we can start moving forward and taking care of some of those outside issues, tennis court, track, some of the fields outside, and really making the outside of the building look a lot nicer. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next is Christopher Cunha for Planning Board. Chris, if you're on here and want to introduce yourself to everybody, please feel free to do so. Chris is not on here tonight. Okay. Next, we're going to go to the Library Trustee Candidates now. Next is going to be Rita Arujo. Reader, are you on here? All right. We'll go back to Rita. I saw her on here. We'll go back to her afterwards. Next is Ann Meitz, and I'm actually going to, Ann is not able to join us tonight because she is home recovering from some major knee surgery. So, I wanted to take the oppo, she sent me a statement that she would like read, and I'm going to take the opportunity for a moment to read it to you. Give me one second. Okay. Okay, forget that.
Hey, Zach.
Yes.
It's Rita.
Rita, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Okay. My name is Rita Arujo. I've lived in Dyton for 74 years at 1423 William Street, and I taught 37 years, one year on the North Shore, and 36 years at the Dorothy Elbeckwith Middle School. I have gone to the library since I was a child. I believe that the library is one of the greatest assets a town, city, or community can have. Our little library does so much for this town, and I would like to hope and keep the building going, and I think the library staff does an incredible job. Great people and many services to the town.
Thank you very much, Rita. Next, I'm going to read Ann Meitz's statement to everybody. As I had mentioned before, Rita was able to unmute herself. Ann is recovering from surgery and is not able to join us tonight. So, that being said, "My name is Ann Meitz, and I'm running for Dyton Public Library Trustee. Although I moved to Dyton from Connecticut only a few years ago, my heart has been here for over 14 years, as my daughter and my family live here. I grew up in Texas and graduated from high school there. I have both a bachelor's and master's degree from Texas Christian University and a master's degree in social work from the University of Connecticut. My work has included the base, teaching the basic education, GED prep in high school, and in the last 25 years, working with frail elders and those with disabilities as the social worker manager for a statewide care management agency. Ann was also an adjunct professor at Quinnipiac University in the Department of Social Work and participated in the development of a national care management certification. Ann has served on the boards of several organizations in Connecticut and was the Chair of the Legislative Committee for the National Organization of Social Work. After moving to Dyton, I became very interested in our library and its history as a Carnegie Library. Ann has been an active member of the Friends of the Library and attends meetings regularly. She was also a member of the 2020 Strategic Planning Committee for the Dyton Public Library, and also, before COVID hit, ran several successful weekly knitting groups. Ann's interest in serving as a trustee grows out of the opportunities that I see our library able to provide in the future. Libraries are no longer just repositories of books. Our small but mighty library provides programming for children and adults, technology assistance, passport services, outreach to seniors, and homebound, in addition to wonderful online services paid independently by the library. Even before COVID, school libraries have no longer been able to provide the kinds of services they formerly did. Our library has filled in many of those gaps. Ann says she has the interest, time, and energy, time, energy, and enthusiasm for the library to serve as an active member of the Board of Trustees. She is motivated to work with new and existing partnerships in the Selectmen to help develop a more robust library despite our existing size constraints. Even all before COVID restrictions are lifted, we need to begin to put in place the plans and goals of the library strategic plan. Our library needs trustees that are interested not only in the library's policies, services, operations, but its development and future as a vital part of Dyton's infrastructure. And again, that's a speak, that's the speech from Ann Meitz, and Ann, if you're listening, we wish you speedy recovery from your surgery. Next is Kevin Smith for Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, everyone. Kevin Smith Jr. of 1147 Center Street. I moved to Dyton with my wife and my daughter Leila back in 2012. We chose to move to Dyton because of the opportunities that it gave our daughter as a special-needs child to develop and grow, and we thought this was a good place to put down our roots and continue our family. We also have another daughter, Parker, who is six, and Leila is 10. I recently became involved in a couple town committees, and now I am seeking election for Parks and Recreation. I'm currently a member of the Open Space Committee and also the Dyton Commission on Disability. I chose to get involved with both of those commissions because of my goals for the Parks Department. My main focus has always been to bring more inclusive opportunities to the playgrounds in town. It's extremely difficult as a parent to watch one of your children not be able to play with her sister or her friends, because there aren't ample opportunities for kids with special needs. Leila, who is 10, is wheelchair-bound, and there are some apparatuses at town facilities that she can play on, but she's extremely secluded in doing so, which, like I said, is kind of painful to watch as a parent. I feel like the current Parks Department has been absent in meeting the community needs, not just from ADA accessibility or inclusivity, but just in general. I want to engage more with the community and take on suggestions from members of the community of how we can improve the parks all around, not just the playgrounds, but whether it be collaborating with the Trails Committee, and like I said, with the Open Space Committee to give everyone an opportunity to really enjoy everything that this town has to offer. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kevin. I did not see Tom Ferry on here or Ed Olney on here. So, we are going to skip over them for now. If they join later on and want to say a few words, we will allow them to do so. Let's move on to the question and answer period of our annual Candidates Night. Again, I want to remind everybody to please put any questions that you have for the candidates in the chat, and make sure that you put your name and your address. Again, please put your name and the address in the chat with your question, for the record. And I'm going to get started. The first question comes from Dr. Brett Zografos, 411 Tremont Street. What, to the Selectman Candidates, what boards, committees, commissions have you volunteered on within the last five years, and how has that experience prepared you to serve as a select person? Leonard, do you want to go first on this one? Leonard, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Hello?
I got you, Leonard. Go ahead.
Over the last five years, I dedicated my time to my wife, Jacqueline, who on March 18th, 2020, passed away from an illness. One of the reasons why I am running now and that I was away from service to the community was due to the time that I spent with her. Now I have the time to dedicate to the town. My service has been in diverse areas, some of which has been with this town as a member of the Board of Selectmen. I have also served on Parks and Recreation in Taunton. I have served on the Drug-Free Task Force in Taunton. I have also worked on the Mayor's Worthy Cause Committee, did work in the recreational area. Much of my experience over the last five years have been more on the professional level, and it is through those that I bring some of the skill sets that I have that I need for this position.
Concluding thoughts?
I'm sorry?
All right. Finish up your thought. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jen? The same question to you. What boards, committees, and commissions have you volunteered on within the last five years, and how has that experience prepared you to serve as a select person?
Sure. I've served on the Cultural Commission. I've served on the Dyton-Rehoboth Special Education Parents Advisory Council, which I am continuing to serve as interim president. I have served on the DR Regionalization Study Committee. I have served on the Commission for Disabilities, and I'm not sure if that's all of it, but these experiences have definitely provided me with the opportunity to get to know folks in town, to really hear and understand concerns of all of our citizens. I really think that from, you know, new folks moving in with young children to old folks who have lived here their whole lives, we need to make sure that we're paying attention to all of our citizens. We need to make sure that we are paying attention to cultural needs as well as our immediate needs of education and utilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Next question is from Nelson DeMello of 938 Dyton Wood Circle in Dyton, and these are questions for the Board of Selectman Candidates. What are your plans to address bringing in more commercial tax dollars in town? Jen, do you want to start with this one?
Sure. Thank you. I think one of the biggest ways that we can get more commercial tax dollars into town is by attracting new business. We can't attract new business until we have sewer expansion We can't attract new business until we have sewer expansion. I know that currently our Board of Selectmen are working with our Town Administrator on an over $700,000 Recovery Act grant that would potentially afford us the ability to expand sewer down 44 and also down 138. I think these projects in restoring our infrastructure will greatly help to attract businesses to our busiest roads in town. We do connect Taunton to Somerset and Taunton to Rehoboth. I really think that these two corridors are great opportunities for us to expand our businesses. And once we're able to bring them in, that definitely will help to expand our commercial tax base.
Thank you very much. Leonard, the same question goes to you. What are your plans to address bringing in more commercial tax dollars to the town?
First thing I'd like to do is to address the issue of sewer. The sewer expansion is expensive, over a million dollars a mile. It also can create a financial burden for those who are required to pay a better tax or tie into the sewerage. The total project Pleasant Street and 138 averages over to $20 million. So the idea of running sewer down at this point in time is impractical. The budget grant money that's coming forward is $720,000, which is far from the amount of money to do that. In regards to bringing business into the town, first, it'd be nice if we could revitalize the Business Development Commission with more emphasis on small business growth. I'd also like to take a look at the Route 44.
Are concluding thoughts, Leonard?
Route 44, Business Overlay and along the waterfront. Thank you.
Thank you very much. To the selectmen candidates again from Nelson DiMello at 938 Dyton Wood Circle. What are your plans to address the town growth and impact on schools, emergency personnel, and town services? And Leonard, I'm going to have you start with this.
Those are pretty broad questions of many areas. In regards to the schools, it comes down to the issue of growth and development, pre-planning instead of reacting. Like to see an increase in house lots to one acre, establish developer impact fee, dedicate more land for recreation, and CPC purchase more land for open space. As far as the need to expand the resources, business obviously is going to be very important for that. And also grant writing. We brought in very fortunate, great deal of money to be used for water, sewer, and broadband expansion most recently. It was explained at the last Board of Selectmen meeting. I have experience in the grant writing field. I have a certificate in grant writing. And I believe those skills will help us bringing additional dollars.
Time's up, Leonard. Thank you very much. Jen, same question. What are your plans to address town growth and impact on schools, emergency personnel, and town services?
Thank you. I too have much experience in grant writing, especially at the state level. I spent years working for Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts where I managed an over $1 million completely grant funded budget to deliver programs in a lot of our urban hubs in eastern Massachusetts. That experience really has taught me how to work with the state and how to appeal to the state. And one of the ways that we can do that is really by having multifaceted projects that address multifaceted needs. So that means looking at our ADA needs and working with the Mass Office for Disabilities to attract dollars through grant funding there as well as, you know, working with the schools to attract grant funding. We also have the ability to bring in grant funding around our new library and around an improvement to our fire station. I think, you know, by serving on the DR Building Study Committee, that is one of the ways that I definitely have put my efforts behind planning. I think that we need to continue planning ahead and look at our infrastructure needs in order to be able to support growth in population.
Time's up, Jen. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Next question posed again to the selectmen candidates from Robert Woods, 158 Chase Street. In what ways will you work to ensure you are keeping tabs on the actual will of the voters? Jen, if you want to start with this one, please go ahead.
Thank you. I think this is a really important question. As someone who believes deeply in servant leadership, I feel that when you are elected to an office, it is your duty to serve the public to their best interests and to the voters. That being said, a lot of folks have asked me about my signs and why they say Select Board. They say Select Board because that is a ballot initiative that you will see a question on your ballot on April 10th. Over 85 communities in Massachusetts have already voted to change their board from Board of Selectmen to Select Board. I also support this effort and, as I said, that'll be on the ballot on April 10th. Should that initiative not pass, I would certainly continue to serve on the Board of Selectmen. And as I stood up and spoke at a town meeting where this was addressed, I always feel that it should be the will of the people. It should not have been decided at a town meeting where not everyone has the ability to attend for various reasons. So I will always make sure that we are listening to the townspeople putting things forward on a ballot when needed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Leah Quinn asks, Leah Quinn from 758 Council Oakway asks, Dyton has lost many residents to the COVID.
Excuse me, I don't get a chance to answer that question?
I'm sorry, Leonard. I thought you had already answered it. Go ahead.
Thank you. Regarding reaching out to the people, one, one of the things that I had proposed or strongly encourage and will do so by reaching out, doing the door to door, is the establishment of neighborhood community action groups. Some of the neighborhoods already have that as a result of tenement associations or neighborhood associations formed by the way they're developed is established.
Excuse me. Please respect the speaker. Thank you, Leonard. You may finish.
Thank you very much. Doing the grassroots effort, reaching out to people in the community by actually going out and meeting them. Secondly, we, I talked earlier about communication. Zoom can be difficult for some people. I know myself, I had some trouble tonight getting in. In regards to more town type meetings would be nice where just for informational sessions, they could be held.
Finish up your thought, Leonard.
Those town type meeting, informal informational meetings could be held at the Behind Town Hall in the open field area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next question comes from Leah Quinn, 758 Council Oakway. And Leonard, I'm going to start with you on this one. Dyton has lost many residents to the COVID-19 pandemic. Seeing as both of you have had meet and greets and sign holding events, I would like to know your decisions on the mask mandate. Are you both adhering to it and what you have been doing to spread awareness of the pandemic at your events? Leonard, we'll start with you. You have a minute.
Thank you. I respect the science involved with this disease. I have been vaccinated for over a month. I work in the healthcare field. And from June of 2020 to March 2021, I have been tested weekly and now every two weeks. I ask supporters to wear masks. I provide masks to those who have forgotten their mask. I also feel that people are responsible for their own actions and must face the consequences of those actions. Although I do support the science and follow the science, I am not the enforcer of the recommendations of the governor, nor do I have a right to act in enforcing. These supporters are adults. They make choices. They have to live with those choices. Thank you.
Thank you, Leonard. Jen, the same question is posed to you.
Thank you. It has been a difficult year for all. I have continued to consistently wear a mask myself. And at any event that we've had, I've made sure that our attendees are wearing masks. At our most recent meet and greet, we've also provided individual pens for anybody who needed to write anything down and hand sanitizer to make sure that folks could sanitize as necessary. When I went door to door, I made sure that I stayed six feet away from doors before they were opened and I was wearing a mask the entire time. It's very important that we as citizens make sure that we are doing our due diligence, even as some folks are getting vaccinated. Not everyone is vaccinated yet. And our children go to school every single day and wear their masks all day long. We can set an example as adults in town as well and wear masks. Whether we're holding signs or at a Cub Scout graduation, it is necessary to make sure that we are keeping our neighbors safe.
Thank you. Next question is asked from Glenn Jefferson, 270 Hillcrest Drive. To the Board of Selectmen candidates, what are your opinions on a five-member Board of Selectmen versus a three-member? And Jen, I'm going to start with you on this one.
Well, I think that's an interesting question. I am mostly of the opinion that more opinions at the table lead to better results. Although we've seen that this can be a struggle sometimes. A case in point would be the school committee with 10 members, five from each town. It can be really difficult to get through conversation and discussion. Meetings last a really long time. I would not be opposed to the idea of a five-member board. I'd like to see it explored a little bit more and especially as our town population is growing. I think having additional members and additional thoughts at the table would be beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. Leonard, you have the same question.
Thank you. I would, this being my first run at the Board of Selectmen and having quite a background in politics since 1972, I see that there is a big need to increase the size of the board to five. One of the things that the way the terms are currently staggered is that it almost ensures that incumbents will get reelected. It also creates the possibility of a political machine being formed where one person can try to persuade a large following to vote a certain way. And we only have one candidate up for reelection. It makes it very difficult to have diversity in choices.
Thank you very much, Leonard. Next is a question from Jason Quinn, 758 Council Oakway. With the Water District being in short supply of water and having a deteriorating infrastructure, how would you work with the Water Department, understanding that they are separate entities, in bringing in funding to upgrade the infrastructure and to find the water? And Leonard, I'm going to start with you on this question.
First and foremost, it's very important to understand that the Water District is a separate entity from the Board of Selectmen. With that in mind, it is very important that there is a spirit of cooperation between both groups. One of the things that most recently happened was the receiving of a 785,000 dollar grant. And with that grant, the money came over on the Board of Selectmen side. So there was definitely a need for both groups to work together for the common good of all the people. That grant would go a long way to helping the Water District acquire new water rights, well development. It also allowed the district to upgrade its treatment plant necessary to process enough water to meet the greater demand brought on by housing development. Also going along with that, developing a stronger ties or partnerships with Somerset, Dyton, and Brookly is something that both the Water District and the Board of Selectmen could, working together, help to enhance.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Jen, the same question is posed to you.
Thank you. I think the biggest part of cooperation is communication and showing up. I attended a recent Water District meeting where I learned a lot from the folks who know it best. Those are the folks who are doing the work every day at the Water District. There is a great need for improvement of the infrastructure. And they're currently undertaking a study that will not only show where the needs are, but also how much each of these improvements will cost and what that will translate to in terms of a rate hike for members of the district. I think that as a member of the Board of Selectmen when elected, I will, you know, definitely want to continue to keep open the lines of communication and make sure that there is no blockage in the way of making these improvements once they've been decided by the Water District.
Thank you. Next question to the Selectmen candidates is from Bob Henrique, 2144 Pleasant Street. What financial budgeting experience do you bring to the board? And Jen, I'm going to start with you on this one.
Sure, as I mentioned earlier, I was the Director of Girl Program and Partnerships at Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts where I was solely responsible for an over million dollar budget annually for delivering program in all of our urban centers in eastern Massachusetts. That experience taught me a lot about handling budgets, especially at the state level where you have to account for where every dollar is spent. I also, I currently work as a financial analyst for an insuretech out of San Francisco. And in that role, I do have review of budgets and in preparation, helping to prepare information for our board at board meetings.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I was muted. Leonard, the same question goes to you. What financial budgeting experience do you bring to the board?
As a former member of the Dyton Rehoboth Regional School Committee, I was involved in the preparation of the budget with the other members of the school committee as well as the Superintendent of Schools. In addition, I was involved in negotiations with the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom in the final numbers that were sent to town for vote on a budget. I was also a headmaster of a school, Northbrook Academy, which had a budget of about $250,000 that I was directly involved in fundraising as well as preparing the budget and implementing that budget. I also was involved in a program through the Taunton Area School to Career, a summer program, which I was in charge of payroll, putting together the budget and raising funds for that program.
Thank you, Leonard. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Next is John Ruffo of 1650 Wellington Street, and his question is directed at Mr. Hall. Please explain what you mean when you say diversity has polarized our town? And what type of issues will your proposed diversity forum address? And will it have any authority to act?
It's not so much an issue of authority. It's an issue of people coming together for a common good. There have been many things that have happened that it's been more of a problem of how it was done other than what was intended. When we talk about the diversity forum, there are many groups who like to see certain groups represented. And there are many people in the town who disagree. What I'm proposing with the diversity forum is to recognize What I'm proposing with the Diversity Forum is to recognize LBGTQ. But also let us not forget that there is another group that has been underrepresented in this town. And it's had some problems in this town. And that is the Native Americans. I live right near their sacred grounds. I've seen what has happened to those grounds. I have also
If you could finish it. Leonard, if you could finish up your sentence.
The Diversity Forum would be something where the groups would be encouraged to come together to reach out to all groups of people, not just one particular group.
Thank you very much. Jason Quinn of 758 Council Oakway asks, again, this question is directed to Mr. Hall. You mentioned you would give incentives to developers for senior housing. What incentives are you proposing? And he has another question for Jen, but I'm going to allow Leonard to answer that question first.
In regards to the incentives, one, maybe reducing permitting fees. Two, tax breaks for developers who live in the town, who are willing to work with the town to develop housing. Those developers not only involve the developer itself, but also contractors, electricians, plumbers, and people that do the work on the landscape.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jen, Jason's question for you is, how would you advocate for additional senior housing in this town?
The question is, how would I advocate for it in terms of getting it built? I think that we should really take a look at what we currently have for senior housing. I was over there last week delivering daffodils with Kevin Smith. And it was like taking a step back in time. So I would love to see if there could be an assessment done at Lincoln Village to see if any expansion could go there. I do also, I am also in favor of 55-plus housing developments with a 40B as we do need to get to our 10% cap for 40B.
Thank you very much. The next question is from Chad Ryan, 927 Dyton Wood Circle. For the Board of Selectment Candidates, please give specific examples of how you plan to make Dyton a more inclusive town with respect to diverse populations. And Jen, I will have you start with this question.
Sure. So one of the things that I have had the privilege of doing over the last year is working on a diversity, equity, and inclusion initiative at my place of work. And I think that that is definitely something that's needed here in Dyton. We took a wonderful step in the right direction by forming the Human Rights Commission. They are doing some phenomenal work and having some great conversations. I think that we should have more inclusive events. Events that support all different kinds of cultures. And really, we need to bring forward arenas where we can have tough conversations. There are some things that we need to work out and come to shared meaning as a people. And I think that we can do it because Dyton has a big heart and is willing to engage in those conversations. And our Human Rights Commission is definitely the place to start with that. And I'd love to see some events, especially where we can have youth come together around some education and some initiatives engaging with one another.
Thank you very much. Leonard, the same question goes to you. And the question was, please give specific examples of how you plan to make Dyton a more inclusive town with respect to diverse populations.
One, I would like to see more emphasis on cultural events. There are many different groups in the town that have unique traits that need to be celebrated. We've mentioned a couple already, LBGTQ, Native Americans. The Portuguese also have a significant heritage here in the town. And I'm sure, you know, women's groups as well could celebrate their diversity. March is Women's History Month. And once the pandemic ends, more activities would also help with educating people. I earlier mentioned about the Diversity Forum, that these groups would come to the table and work together to create ideas, how they can expand their individual needs, but also how they can work together to help each other.
All right, your time is up. Thank you very much. Leah Quinn from 758 Council Oakway actually has a question for the school committee members. Has the school committee formed a school building study committee yet? Based on the information received from the NASDAQ study in 2018, we will be at capacity at the Dyton Elementary and Dyton Middle Schools in the incoming year of 2021, 2022. Any advice you can give on this issue would be great. And Tom O'Connor, I'm going to start with you.
Sure. Thank you for the question. So we do have a school committee or building advisory committee with the school committee. And it did start working, was working on looking at capacity issues. And then, you know, we got into COVID, started looking at COVID. And there were some meetings that were, I don't want to say they're consistent, but there were some meetings that were happening. And then with COVID kicking off, that took somewhat of a backseat, unfortunately. Just to be completely honest with you, it took a little bit of a backseat. There was a period of time over the summer where, you know, a good chunk of the school committee was meeting three or four times a week at night trying to get plans in place to pick up this incoming school year. We did have a discussion, a meeting or two ago, maybe three meetings, two, probably two meetings or about need to set a meeting back up for that committee and move forward. That's why I mentioned capacity issues earlier when I spoke, because we do need to get that committee back together and start looking at some of those issues.
Thank you very much, Tom. Glenn, do you have anything further to add to this?
Yeah, so Tom pretty much summarized it up. The only thing I'd add, just so for everyone to witness, and you've probably heard me mention it before, is that, you know, technically, the regional agreement, the way that it's written is the K to eight capacity issues are solely the the problem of the member town. So the regional district, we can just go to Rehoboth and Dyton and say, hey, we're at capacity. You guys need to do something because the K to eight campuses are only leased to the district. Versus the high school, we actually have to go out and bond and do it. So the challenge and one thing to remember too is the committee that Tom has alluded to, that the district has, has members from both towns on it and some of the administration. But ultimately, when it comes time to building or doing anything in the town, it's really, you know, goes back to the selectmen to drive. Because we can go to the town and say, hey, we got 100 kids that are over capacity at the Dyton campus. We need a place to do, which is that's why Dyton stepped up and, you know, funded the Trailers a few years back because we're at such capacity. So, but yeah, it's in progress, but as Tom alluded, the last year has has kind of delayed things with COVID and everything, so.
Thank you very much. The next question is from Kevin Smith Jr., 1147 Centre Street. And this question is directed towards Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall, please elaborate on your incentive program to promote building senior housing.
I believe I answered that a minute ago, but okay. One, regarding senior housing, incentive program would include waiving permit fees. Would include the possibility of tax breaks for local business owners who are involved in those projects. It would also involve reaching out to developers who can help market senior housing and attracting seniors into our community to those housing. Whether it be assisted living programs or a private community that would encourage seniors in higher income brackets into the town.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The next question is from Joanne Racine from Main Street. Dyton Public Library, the building is inadequate to meet the needs of the townspeople. What are your thoughts on building a new library? If you are in favor of a new library, what would you, what do you plan to do to help make a new public library a reality in the near future? And Leonard, I will let you start.
We talked about this issue back late 1990s when I was on Friends of Library and the School Committee. And it becomes an issue of finances and unfortunately at priorities. And unfortunately, we take a look at what's going on over at the fire station. We take a look at the road that are going to be development roads of Forest Street area. It would be wonderful to have a library, a new library. It is attractive. However, public safety is a high priority. And we have needs, we have wants. It would be nice to have a new library. But some of the public safety issues and infrastructure issues, unfortunately, at this time, need to take a priority.
Thank you very much. Jen, the same question is posed to you.
Thank you. I am definitely for building a new library. As I mentioned earlier, I have a child with special needs and that building is inaccessible. I know that there's going to be some work done on the bathroom and a second means of egress, but that children's room is not accessible. We are lucky that we haven't seen a lawsuit from anyone yet about accessibility issues at that library. I do think that it is a need that the town has to improve our library. And I would definitely work on grant funding to make that a reality. I grew up in a town not too far from here in Lakeville. We had a very similar library. And it was, we were able to go forth and build a beautiful accessible library for many different purposes. We have a, there was a history room built there, youth library, et cetera. I am a big supporter of our fire department and I do think public safety is a high need. I clearly have experienced a fire myself in my life. But I don't think, I think it's a false choice to say we have to choose between the library and the fire station.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you. The next question comes from Ken Pacheco of 1860 Milk Street. And Ken writes, I would like to thank all candidates for running. My question is for the candidates for Selectmen. Annual and special town meetings are so important for the residents of Dyton to provide the direction of town government. Mr. Hall, you have not attended any of these meetings for at least the last five years, where we voted for such important things such as the new police station, six modulators for the Dyton Elementary School, and the sewer study. Is this an example of leadership that you will provide Dyton? Mrs. Dychkowski, you have attended four of the five annual town meetings. And could you please also respond? But I would like to give Leonard a chance to respond first.
Earlier this evening, I explained what had happened during that five-year period. I am in a situation now where I have total dedication to serving the town. I'm one of those people who believes that family comes first. And during that period of my life, I had issues at home that I needed to take care of. That has changed, so my focus will be changing. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen, if you could also respond to the same question.
Sure. I think attending town meeting is extremely important. I recognize that there are barriers to participation. As a mother, it is difficult to get to town meeting. Usually my husband and I have to choose which of us is going to attend unless we invest in a babysitter for the night. Our children are not really welcome at town meeting. So when elected, I would work on a public-private partnership to ensure that there would be childcare available at all town meetings. So that we can help to break down some of those barriers. I think that, you know, town meeting is the most direct form of democracy that we have still in this country. Standing up and being heard and being counted is what happens at town meeting. And I definitely think as a member of the Select Board, I would continue to find ways to make sure that folks could participate in town meeting. And if we have to get creative to do that, then we do that. I definitely think there is a need.
Thank you so much. Next is a question from Glenn Jefferson of 270 Hillcrest Drive. To the Board of Selectmen Candidates, Rehoboth continues to talk about deregionalization and pulling out their K to eight with a non-binding article for the upcoming warrant. Even if passed, the state would have to approve it. The question to each of you would be, how would you react to that and what are your thoughts? Pulling out the K to eight dissolves the entire district and it doesn't automatically form a new nine to 12 district. What would your stance be? Should Dyton stay as an independent district? Should Dyton approach a neighboring town to consider forming a new K through 12 district? And Jen, I will start with you on this, please.
Sure, this is a great question. It's one that I've spent a lot of time thinking about. Deregionalization would bring with it many different consequences. Not the least of which is that our entire sub-separate population for special education is housed at Beckwith Middle School in Rehoboth right now. So should Rehoboth pull out of the regional agreement and deregionalize? We would have to address that space need. There's not a facility at our middle school to support students with those needs. So we would be facing out-of-district placements. And that would come at a huge cost to our town. So I would be in favor of looking at alternative regionalization options with neighboring towns who have similar interests.
Thank you. Leonard, the same question is posed to you.
I truly believe that when all is said and done, that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education will rule the same way as they did when Brookly and Somerset were attempting to separate. And I honestly believe that we will need to work out our differences between Rehoboth and Dyton through better communication. However, if it should come to pass that they do split, it would definitely be necessary to work with neighboring communities for a partnership. As Jen mentioned, the special ed needs at Beckwith would certainly be something that would be a major challenge for Dyton to handle with the current population, school population issues that they have.
Thank you very much, Leonard. I appreciate it. The next question is from Raff Adelfin, 400 Lincoln Avenue. To the Board of Selectmen Candidates, Dyton's history is being erased right before our eyes with the demolition of two historical houses within the last two years. Despite Dyton's rich history, there are only three recognized historical districts in town when there should be more. If elected Selectman, do you promise to help the Historical Commission in designating at least three more historic districts? And Leonard, I will start with you.
I spent 30 years as a history teacher. So I think it's clear, my love of history. And the history of Dyton has offshoots because some of the founders of Dyton originally lived in Taunton. That to me is, the answer is definitely absolutely that I would be in favor of that. We need to preserve the traditions and heritage that this town has.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Jen, same question. Jen, same question goes to you.
I am also very much in favor of keeping the historical character of our town. I think it's a shame that two houses came down. It was unfortunate, but it was a need that we had due to blockages. And I do wish to work with the Historical Commission to make sure that we can continue to preserve that history. And whether it's working on additional grant opportunities or fundraising or awareness campaigns, I definitely think that this is something that we can work together as a town to accomplish.
Thank you so much. Next question is from Caroline Ventura, 1253 Smith Street, North Dyton. And this goes to the Board of Selectment Candidates. What will you do to keep our small town a small town? Caroline says she's a fourth-generation resident and she finds the loss of land disturbing. Jen, I'll start with you.
I would agree with that. I think it's a very difficult balance that we need to strike, right? One of the things that we're up against is that we have not yet hit that 10% cap or threshold for our 40B housing. So there is always the potentiality of additional development going in. That being said, I want us to, as a town, really come up with a plan for how to use that. At a recent open space meeting that I attended, I was able to hear the finalized open space plan that they had been working so hard on. I think that we have so many wonderful natural resources in Dyton that we need to protect and be careful of. But that being said, we do have development needs as well and we do have some growth that's going to happen. What we can do though is to plan for that growth and make sure that it's done in areas where it can be accomplished with minimal impact to the environment. I think keeping Dyton a small town in terms of keeping our speed limits down is really necessary as well.
Thank you very much, Jen. The next question is from
Let me answer that.
Oh, Lenny, sorry. Lenny, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Strategies to control growth. Increase house lots to one acre. Establish developer impact fee. Dedicate more land for recreation. Work with Conservation Commission and Commissioner to enforce conservation laws. Dedicate more time and energy to development of the Riverway as a recreational area. Going along with that, also dedicating more land to parks and recreation in town. Asking CPC to purchase more land. And review current building and zoning codes with emphasis on controlling growth. And combining, preserving the integrity of the community by the major groups that are involved in decision-making or planning. To keep in mind, the right to remain a farming and agrarian community is, is the goal by, of many people in this town.
Thank you very much. Next question is from Taylor Dodenhoff, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name, from 441 Forest Street. What will you do to address the current issue of Forest Hills Estates? This issue is a major concern for Dyton residents. And Lenny, you can go first.
First and foremost, very important to understand that the Board of Selectment is not the decision-maker on this issue. It is the planning board. We can advocate, and that I plan on doing. There is a need for people to continue, when I say people, the voters and citizens of Dyton, to continue advocating, persuading, talking to the members of the planning board, to insist upon, to them that negotiations must be tough, they must be fair, but they also must be done in such a way that we don't end up in court and spending hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees. When you have a development such as Forest Hills, when the developer comes to the table, it's late in the game and you're at a disadvantage. And now it's pretty clear that some type of project is going to go in there. The key is
Leonard, finish up your thought. It's, your time is up.
The key is going to be how we can reduce the size of that so it's fair to the developer and fair to the people that get impacted by that negotiations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Jen, the same question goes to you.
I think first and foremost, as a voting public, we deserve to see the impact studies that have been done. The impact studies, to the best of my knowledge, were performed in 2008, which was a long time ago in terms of our town and in terms of what's already happened for growth in our town. While I don't think that we can block the entire development from coming in, I do think that there are many different steps that we can take to make sure that we work with the developer to keep the number of lots that are developed smaller. 135 homes would result in a huge influx to our population and taxing of our infrastructure. So there are some steps that we can take as a public right now. One of them is to sign the petition. Another is to reach out to folks who are living in that area who want to be active, get involved in conversations and show up at meetings, ask the right questions and get some answers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we continue, I need to address one thing. And I'm a little disturbed by the fact that I have to address this. I'm going down the chat and I'm finding a lot of disrespect going on in the chat between residents on the call. I would like to, at this point, be, put everybody on warning that if you cannot be respectful in the chat, you will be removed from the call. I will ask cable to remove you. And furthermore, I have a comment on here that I have skipped a couple of questions. I have not, some of your questions have already been answered. So please continue to be respectful and civilized and allow the questions to be answered by the candidates. And I don't want to have to repeat this again. Thank you. Next question is from Glenn Jefferson. If the town received the grant and our town is serviced by three water districts, why should it be used for just the Dyton Water District? And Jen, I'll let you start.
Well, I am not apprised of the grant that was awarded, so I would hesitate to comment on that. What I would do instead would be to engage both the Board of Selectmen and the Water District to find out more about this. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you very much. I am here. I'm sorry, Pat, I was muted. Thank you very much, Jen.
Hello?
Leonard, go ahead.
Thank you. It is my understanding that that grant was awarded to the town. I am not clear of the particular terms of the agreement. Mike Mullen would be better at that, explaining the terms and how that would work. But certainly, there are many needs in many sections of Dyton, whether it be North Dyton or South Dyton. That grant included broadband services, which really, because of the lack of competition with Comcast, isn't really an issue. Water and sewer, ah, how that money will be allocated is certainly open for negotiations with the Board of Selectmen and the Water District. How the split will take place, I'm not sure of those terms.
Thank you, Leonard. I appreciate it. Next question is from Melissa St. Laurent, 366 School Lane. To the selectmen, what are your thoughts on creating budgets from the bottom up and truly auditing each department's spending? And Leonard, go ahead and start on this one, please.
There is a budget process in the town. And that budget process includes a great deal of scrutiny. And one of the groups that plays a major role in that scrutiny is FINCOM, Finance Committee. Currently, each department is required to submit a budget. And after watching the last Board of Selectmen meeting and the special meeting, there were a couple that didn't turn in their budgets in a timely fashion. And accountability is more of, of a concern than the development of those budgets. When a department prepares a budget, there are meetings that are held within the department. That information is taken. And then hearings are held before the Board of Selectmen and FINCOM.
Okay, your time is up, thank you.
You're welcome.
The next question, you're going to answer the same question.
Thank you. Melissa, thank you for your question. In terms of an answer, what I can tell you is that most of the budgets, as they go through the process, are looked at from the bottom up. So first, we're looking at what was spent in the current year and what the needs are for the upcoming year. So there is a fair amount of predicting that has to go in there. And when something happens like a pandemic, there is some pivoting that has to occur. But having experienced that process myself with the Commission of Disabilities this year, we're still in the middle of that process. I do think that there is a fair amount of scrutiny. There is a lot of communication that goes on, a lot of thoughtfulness. Folks are really trying to put some teeth behind what they're asking for in their budgets and really trying to be careful with that. Again, the process is always, the department makes the ask, then the town administrator and the select board can make a recommendation. And then it goes to FINCOM for their recommendations. But ultimately, the budget is approved by the citizens at town meeting.
Thank you very much. The next question from Melissa St. Laurent is actually directed at Kevin Smith. But before I go there, I am going to bring up again the fact that the chat needs to remain civilized and I am going to start removing people if they don't continue to be respectful. I have not skipped any questions. Your questions have either been answered or I have not gotten to them yet. I am going through the questions as they appear on my chat screen. So I have to, I apologize if I have not gotten to your question. We will get to your question, please be patient. Thank you. The next question goes to Kevin Smith from Melissa St. Laurent again. Kevin, what will be your first playground you will work on to make it truly all-inclusive?
Thank you for the question, Melissa. I think the forefront of new playground projects is going to be the North Dyton Playground, only because it's been absent for 15 years, as everyone knows. And there was a plan put in place by the current Parks Department that myself, along with other members of the Commission on Disability, felt like it didn't check off all the boxes for being inclusive. It was accessible and it met requirements, but it wasn't inclusive. And actually, myself and Jonathan Gale, the ADA Coordinator for the town, have started a joint task force specifically for inclusive playgrounds, which will have public meetings. We've had one already and we're going to have one in the near future. Anything that we touch that has to do with a playground will be inclusive. We're not going to strive just to meet the minimum requirements. We're going to go above and beyond because our focus is going to be that not all disabilities are visible and we want to make sure that we include something for, for every child that may have a disability and obviously for all the typical children as well.
Thank you very much. The next question is I apologize, I'm going through a bunch of comments that are not questions. It's from Casey Betancourt, 756, 1763 Wellington Street. If the existing sewer system has not brought in any new business, why would expansion help to bring business? And Jen, why don't you start on this one?
I think just in terms of real estate and where the expansion would connect the sewer lines between Taunton and Somerset, and then also on 44, there would be new real estate available for businesses to move into, especially small businesses. It's really not something that you can invest in a septic system very easily, right? And it's not something that you want to be able to, you want to have to maintain over time. So being able to tie into an existing sewer system is a great attraction for business owners. And I think that expansion along 138 and 44 would absolutely open up new real estate for that.
Thank you. Leonard, the same question, Leonard, the same question is posed to you. Go ahead.
I totally agree that sewer expansion would be attractive for new businesses. But I also would like to caution people that would mix use. It also would attract more developments. And that can be a two-edged sword. More housing development, whereas, yes, it could bring in more business, but there are other factors that could influence business too, like the tax rate. So expanding sewer beside the cost is something that we're going to have to approach cautiously and maybe want, may want to take a look at rezoning some of those areas so that we can control development, housing development, which really, we can't afford to do at this time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The next question, I'm going to go back because I, I did skip the question, but I want to make sure his voice is heard. Joe Keane of 1939 Horton Street has asked the question, and I, I believe this was answered, but if you could please answer it again. What is the select board? And Lenny, if you want to answer that, and I'll let Jen answer it also, please.
Okay. Dyton traditionally has been part of a heritage that is New England. It is my understanding that the term selectmen is something that is a big part of the New England heritage and culture. It's not just the Dyton term. It is something that is prevalent throughout New England. Ultimately, this issue comes down to the will of the people. The world is not going to change if we go from selectmen to select board. And there are bigger issues, more important issues that need to come to the table than whether we're called selectboard or selectmen. Personally, I like to keep the tradition as it is. Selectmen. But my world is not going to end if it becomes selectboard.
Thank you, Lenny. Your time is up. Thank you very much. Jen, if you can answer the same question.
Sure. Having spent 18 years of my life working with youth, I know the importance of representation. And for our young women in town and other folks who identify neither as male or female, to have representation in the form of a non-gender-specific term like selectboard would be meaningful. Eighty-five other communities in the state of Massachusetts have already made the change, including most recently, the town of Middleborough, who also has a fair history, just like the town of Dyton. And the change of the name from Board of, from Board of Selectmen to Selectboard has been a symbolic gesture to all of its citizens and a gesture that will carry into the future. This again is up to the will of the people. It is on the ballot for April 10th. And again, I will continue to serve the community, no matter what the community has decided. But it is time that we stand up for all of our citizens and make sure that they are represented.
Thank you. Thank you. The next question is from Robert Perry, 1531 Stanley On Drive to the Selectman candidates. What is your position on implementing impact fees on developers? I understand this falls under the planning board. However, I would like your views. And Jen, go ahead and start on this one, please.
So can you just repeat the question for me? Is that view on the planning board?
He says, what is your position on implementing impact fees on developers? I understand this falls under the planning board. However, I would like your views on it.
I am not opposed to impact fees on developers. I definitely think that that's something that our planning board would need to look into. I think that there are lots of ways that the planning board can negotiate with our developers in terms of, you know, implementing different things that can be a benefit to the entire town. Impact fees might be only one of those avenues.
Thank you. Lenny, you're up.
Thank you. First of all, that would require a bylaw change. As a result, that would be something that the people of the town would be voting on. It won't, it wouldn't be just a planning board decision. I am truly in favor of that. A formula would be created. It would take into consideration the expense incurred by schools, public safety, DPW. That would be put into a formula times the number of houses. That would bring in additional monies to the community. It wouldn't be a tax. It would help ease a burden for a community that is overdeveloped at this point in time. And our schools are going to pay dearly and our tax base is going to pay dearly for that overdevelopment.
Thank you. Next question is from Glenn Jefferson. We currently have a hard time getting people to become involved in town operations. Last I heard, our finance committee was down to three members. When the chair moved out of town, he had to continue to stay on the board just so a quorum could exist and they could meet. What would you do to get more involvement from citizens? And Leonard, you're first.
I really truly believe that outreach is necessary. And outreach means going out into the neighborhoods and encouraging people to be more involved in their government. Those neighborhood action committees would help themselves and do things to better their neighborhoods. But also, people could be empowered to become more involved in government and take a neighborhood leadership position and taking that a step further and becoming more involved politically as well. There's great potential in those neighborhood action groups. Communication in general needs to get better. A lot of people are uninformed and don't know about some of these committees. Example is the CPC. Many people don't know what the CPC does. Some people didn't know that the Human Rights Committee had just been formed. Many people don't go on the computer and go to the website to see what this town has to offer. It's nice, it's helpful, but there has to be other ways to inform the people as to what's going on in the town, and that will get people involved.
Okay, thank you, Leonard.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it. Jen, same question.
Thank you. I've mentioned earlier, and I'll mention again, civic engagement for our youth is really important. And what I mean about that is we have a robust curriculum where we teach American history and we teach American government. But really inviting youth to come and participate as part of their government is really demonstrable to how they will develop into future citizens. I myself had applied to be part of the Finance Committee and never heard back from anyone at the committee. I think that that is a shame. I think that we definitely need to get more exposure. What is the time commitment? What is required of you? With that transparency comes knowledge, so folks know what they might be able to commit to. I think, you know, one of these, one of the silver linings to the pandemic this year is the ability to participate remotely. It certainly has helped folks with disabilities and with childcare and eldercare issues. Maybe this is one of the barriers to participation in town committees and boards. So we should definitely think about continuing that hybrid model of meetings so that folks can participate and lend their talent, time and talent.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Next question is from Casey Bettencourt, 1763 Wellington Street. Why should Dayton punish developers for its poor future planning of the schools and water system? Jen, if you want to take this first, go ahead.
Okay, so Casey, I'm not sure what you mean by punishing developers for its poor planning. I think that developers are a part of the community as well and we need to engage in conversations and open dialogue. A responsible developer would not want to overtax a school system and overcrowd classrooms. I want to make sure that whatever we're doing as a community is a team effort, right? So we would engage developers in those conversations. And certainly, we have members of our voting public who are developers. And so they would, of course, have a voice. I don't think that impact studies or impact fees or holding them accountable to the impact that they will have on the town is punishment. It is engagement in their community.
Thank you. Leonard, same question goes to you.
To punish someone means you take something away from them. Impact fees are not taking anything away. But the key to understand good growth, good development, is transparency and good planning. And that is accomplished by the various groups. Zoning, planning, building commissioner, coming together to put together a comprehensive plan and then explaining that plan to the developers and to the community at large. If everyone knows the rules ahead of time, people will know what the expectations are, expectations of the developer, as well as what the townspeople will expect in their neighborhoods. So there won't be any surprises, like many people in Forest Hills were after going from 2008 to 2020. Would really, no action taken on a development that all of a sudden has people in panic mode.
Thank you. Next question is from Bob Henry, 2144 Pleasant Street. You cannot stop a 40B, nor can the planning board. How do you get ahead of it so that you can help guide it, guide it to the betterment of the town? Explain what your knowledge is of a 40B. And Leonard, go ahead and take this one first this time, please.
Dayton is currently at about 5.8 of its goal of affordable housing in the town. That needs to be something that is at the forefront of planning of developments in the community. To go along with that, there's a need to focus on senior development. It is less costly and has less of an impact than general affordable housing, economically assisted housing, where children are involved. Children create a major impact on dollars and cents of a community. They actually, the cost to educate them takes out more money per year than tax dollars put in by that family. So there's a loss of revenue there. There's need to encourage certain groups to come in.
Your time is up, Leonard. Thank you very much. The next question is from Chad Ryan.
Can I answer that one?
Jen, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, so the threshold by state law in Massachusetts is that we have to have a minimum of 10% affordable housing in the town. And we are currently only about halfway to that minimum threshold. And what that threshold does is it allows the town, after we have reached the 10%, to have a little more say in what is going in. Right now, if a developer goes to the state and complains and says, we're going to make it a 40B, we have a lot less say and a lot less negotiation in those developments. So with that in mind, we need to do some forward planning. We need to think about how and where are we going to build in order to meet that 10% threshold so that then we have more negotiating power in our core as a town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question is from Chad Ryan. During the pandemic, we have seen an increase in the use of Zoom and other technology to conduct town business, technologies such as Zoom meetings. Is this something you would like to continue? Jen, take it away.
I am a big fan of continuing to use Zoom and other technology to continue to expand engagement. I do think that a hybrid model of meeting would be wonderful. We've been able to do that successfully. Some of the benefits of using Zoom go far beyond remote participation. It can break down barriers for folks with different disabilities and be able to participate. There's closed captioning. There's the ability to slow or speed up feed. And there's the ability to capture meetings that can be recorded later and also have the full participation of the public, either through chat or by unmuting to ask questions when maybe they cannot attend in person. So yes, I would definitely be a fan of continued use. I think that a hybrid model where we have in-person meetings but also have a remote contingent is the most responsible way to move forward.
Thank you. Leonard?
We've learned a great deal about Zoom and there's been a learning curve. And as we saw with the planning board meeting, there's been some growing pains. But it truly is important that we continue with it. A hybrid model is definitely the way to go. But also, the idea of having additional informational hearings in public would be beneficial. Not meetings necessarily for decision-making, but to disseminate information and have give and take on issues such as development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Zach, can I comment on that?
Very, very fast.
Well, I don't know if you want to include Tom or I. And I agree with what the other Selectmen said, but same on the school committee side. There's been value that's been brought in from being remote. But I also want to say, I think hybrid is important for community involvement. It allows more people to be engaged. But I think committees themselves still need to be in person when possible, as much as possible, because there is something that's lost in dialogue and people's faces and body language. And also remember too, right now, the only reason these boards can meet is because the Attorney General has waived a lot of the open meeting laws. And if that goes back to how it was, then we won't be able to continue how we were. So I'm not sure if it is something boards are pushing, boards of selectmen and whatnot. They may need to take it up with legislatives and the people in Boston to push the AG to update this, but...
Thank you. Tom, do you have anything to add to that?
Just that I think that, you know, Glenn's right that the governor's mandate right now says that we can, you know, operate this way. If that changes moving forward, I think it's important that a hybrid model, while the committees may have to all meet in person, I think offering a hybrid model where the public can interact still is really valuable. Because on the school committee side, we've seen, you know, we only got big groups of people when important things, budget, loss of activities and extracurriculars. Otherwise, people weren't around. We'd get maybe 10 people at a meeting. And we're seeing, you know, a small meeting for us now is 50. And we've axed out Google meets at 250 at some of our meetings. So I think the hybrid piece is really important moving forward, whether we're meeting in person or not.
Thank you. This question is actually a valid question for all of the candidates who are on tonight. Does any other candidate want to speak to this? Okay. Moving on, the next question is from Michael Pereira of 319 Tremont Street. Jen, Selectman Zagrafus has been a very big supporter of you. With many townspeople disagreeing with his behavior, how can residents be sure that their voice will be heard when it seems like the board will be made up of just one view?
Well, I'd have to say that that's a pretty insulting accusation if the board would be made up of one view if I were elected. I am a person of my own mind. I listen to facts and make decisions based off of that. I've never made a decision based off of what somebody else has decided is the best move. I have made it a point since I made the decision to run last June to make sure that I do my homework and listen and participate. I have attended as many meetings as I possibly can. I have met with town employees and I form my own opinions. So when elected, I will continue to form my own opinions and I will continue to take correspondence from voters to make sure that their voices are heard as well.
Thank you. The next question is from Melissa St. Laurent. What are your thoughts on a ballot town meeting? And Melissa, I'm going to assume that you're asking about voting at town meeting by ballot instead of by voice. Am I correct? Yes, I am. Okay. So Jen, if you want to answer that question, go ahead.
I mean, we definitely have other means of voting besides voice, right? We raise our hand and get counted by the counters as they come through a town meeting. So I'm not sure if that's what Melissa's getting at or if the entire warrant would become a ballot. I don't know that that is the best route. The reason being, town meetings have the floor discussion that happens. And I think that this is a really important part of town meeting. So while I wouldn't want to see the ballot take the place of that, I wouldn't be opposed to using it to augment, especially if it were to break down barriers for participation for certain folks depending on their needs. So I hope that that answers your question, Melissa. I'd love to learn more if you'd like to reach out to me about that.
Thank you very much. Leonard, the same question is posed to you.
We have used the current format since the beginning of this town. I question the need to change from a tradition point of view. But I also have concerns about, one, the expense of adding the ballot and also maintaining the integrity of the vote. I truly understand the need to involve as many people in the process as possible. But until someone can assure me that the integrity of the vote and the ballots, I question whether we can go forward with a change such as that at this time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The next question is from Joe Keane, 1939 Horton Street. And this is to the Board of Selectmen candidates. And Lenny, I'm going to start with you. Which flags should be flown on town property?
I've made it clear through this whole campaign how I feel about that. On town property, the current policy is the American flag, POW flag, and the flags of the arms service branches. Human Rights Committee was asked to bring in a policy change recommendation that would be inclusive of other groups. That did not happen. As a result, the current policy, unless the voters decide otherwise, would be the American flag, the POW flag, Massachusetts flag, and the arms service flags. The current policy that is in place.
Thank you. Jen, the same question is posed to you.
I believe the town of Dayton flag is also included in that current policy. That being said, I do believe that this is again a decision that should be left up to the voters. Our Human Rights Commission made a recommendation that the pride flag should be flown during the month of June, which is Pride Month. But this isn't an issue about me. But this isn't an issue about me. This is an issue about our townspeople and what they want to see happen. Do we want to see unity? Do we want to see welcome and inclusivity? If that's the case, then the town will vote to support that. Do I think that any other flags should join the American flag, the POW flag in our veteran circle? No, I do not. I highly respect those emblems of the service of our country. And I would never, you know, act to add to that. I think that there are many other ways that we can include representation in our town. And again, I think working with committees like the Human Rights Commission and other committees to figure out what that is and how to move forward with that is the right move.
Thank you. Next question is from Casey Betancourt, 1763 Wellington Street. Since Forest Hills is a settlement agreement, a lawsuit is actually a court order after it was submitted to judge and has no statute of limitations due to being a lawsuit versus the government. Why does anybody running for office believe they can stop the project? And Jen, I'll start with you.
I don't believe that we can stop the project. I think that it is a project that's going to happen when a private person owns a piece of property. They can work to develop their property. What we can do as a town is to make sure that we are imposing regulations and not waiving bylaws. I think that our planning board has a lot of work to do in terms of making this process more transparent for the town, including figuring out a way to better handle meetings. For instance, like this meeting is being handled tonight where everyone is on Zoom unmuted but able to submit their questions in the chat. I would love to see a format like that in the future.
Thank you. Leonard?
As I said earlier this evening, this project will go in. The question is going to be what type of project is finally developed? That is something that the planning board with input from its townspeople will negotiate with the developer. No one wants to see the town incur a huge legal expense of battling this out in court. So it would be in the best interest of both sides if people would sit at the table and negotiate a plan that's win-win for the developer and win-win for the town. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Jen, I gave you the opportunity to answer the question, right? I did. Thank you. The next question is from, actually, it's a comment from Bill Mello. Seems that the flag issue does not promote unity as it is serving to cause division. Leonard, I'm going to allow you both to respond to the comment if you'd please do so. Again, go ahead.
Thank you. I said from the beginning that I did not have a problem with the gay pride flag, and I don't. I just feel that it should be a private group, private organization, not LGBTQ, but a diversity forum. And what I'd like to see done is to invite other groups to the table. And I mentioned earlier, Native Americans. Taunton has a diversity forum. It involves many different groups and it is going very well. And there's no reason we can't do the same thing in Dayton. Thank you.
Thank you. Same thing, if you could respond to the comment.
Sure. I would argue that our Human Rights Commission represents all human rights and that would include our native populations, our Black populations, our LGBTQ populations and other unidentified populations. I think that the flag issue might be a divisive one for some people, but I don't shy away from having discussions over difficult topics. I think that forming the Human Rights Commission was the right move that our select board made. And now we have a group of engaged individuals, probably the most attractive commission that we've had, folks stepping up and volunteering to become part of since its formation. This is a great way to continue engagement for folks in town so that they can get in and they can put their time and talents to work. The, the Human Rights Commission has done great work already and they've only been together for a short period of time. I'd really like to see what more that they can do for us.
Thank you very much. Another question comes from Casey Betancourt on 1763 Wellington Street. And this is directed to Mr. Hall. Casey said, it seems like you want to keep everything the same as it was 40 years ago. But how would you handle bettering the town to continue flourishing in the future? And Mr. Hall, you can respond to that, please.
Well, Casey, first of all, one of the things that I'd like to see happen to improve the quality of the town is better planning, better communication, more input by the citizens. One way you do that is to reach out to the citizens, grassroots, going door to door, meeting with them in the neighborhood committees to find what they want for their town for the future. I do believe in tradition and tradition is important, but growth of a community is important. And when I say growth of a community, that doesn't mean adding more houses and bringing in more developers. Growth of a community means getting more people involved in the interaction to make the community a better place.
Thank you.
If you don't grow, you become stagnant. So to say that I believe that we should remain like we were 40 years ago? No, I'm just saying we need to plan it and we need to involve and bring more people to the table to plan for a better future for all people.
Thank you. Thank you, Leonard, for responding to that.
You are.
The next question, and I'm only going to take the three more, three more questions that are in the chat and then we're going to wrap up just because it's getting late. This question is from Robert Woods. What is your specific plan to clean up the blight and litter in town? And Lenny, you can go first on this one, please.
Well, one of the things that I was a little disappointed, and I understand, was that Earth Day was canceled because of the pandemic. But I've noticed on several of the chat rooms that groups of individuals are going to be doing that. And I would hope in the future that we return to the Earth Day program that we had in Dayton. But I'd also like to see it expanded, involving the youth more in it and also park and recreation. Because in Taunton, they have an incredible Earth Day program that includes many activities and includes many different departments. DPW, individuals, park and rec, schools. And they make it not only a day of cleanup, but also a day of festivities at the end after the cleanup. We can do some great things with this Earth Day cleanup. The other thing that can happen is people in the individual neighborhoods and around their homes can also help on a daily basis by cleaning up after themselves and some of the litter that may blow into their yards or in their neighborhoods.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, Leonard. Jen, the same question.
Sure, it was a very windy day today. And earlier I went to my neighbors and picked up their recycling that had blown into the road. I definitely think that there are steps that we can take as a town to kind of help mitigate that when it happens on trash day to make sure that we have appropriate receptacles so that we don't have trash blowing all over and into our waterways. I think Earth Day is a wonderful idea and program, but we don't have to wait till Earth Day to do it. I think that there can be incentives for town, for folks in town to get involved. Myself, with my children on Martin Luther King Day, we did a cleanup down Hart Street and onto Pleasant Street. I think if we sort of engage in a viral campaign to get folks motivated, where we're posting different pictures of where we cleaned up and how much we cleaned up, maybe start a contest. I think that this would be a wonderful way to get lots of different folks involved in cleaning up our town. And it's something that could happen at all different times of the year. It wouldn't have to just be on Earth Day. But I definitely think opening that conversation is a good one to have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have time for two, we have time for two more questions. Leah Quinn, 758 Council Oakway asks, this is directed to Mr. Hall. We have a Human Rights Committee already established in Dayton. How would your proposed diversity forum be different in reaching underrepresented groups in Dayton? And you have a minute. Go ahead.
The Human Rights Committee is a governmentally appointed body that could or may be influenced by a political agenda. Not necessarily, maybe the case. A private group would allow individuals to join for a common purpose, diversity, not for political reasons. I really feel that this issue would be better served if it was less political and more focused on individuals and care for each other.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The next, we have two more questions. This one comes from Jonathan Gale, 22 Waterford Circle. And Jonathan, I apologize, I did not see your email until just now. As we all know, this goes to Parks and Rec. As we all know, the chairperson of the Parks and Recreation Commission has not held any meetings for quite a while. Kevin, if you are elected to the commission, what steps can you take to ensure that the commission holds meetings, especially if the chairperson does not set up any meetings? As you know, there has been, recently been conversation around building a fully inclusive playground in our town. Could you please give us an idea of what you envision for such a playground? And also what you will try to do to make all of our playgrounds more inclusive and accessible? And Kevin, you may respond to that question.
Okay, yes, so the current Parks Department held its last meeting on August 4th. So it has been quite a while. I know that COVID has come up for a reasoning why things have not been done, which is understandable to an extent, but also it's a good opportunity. It would have been a good opportunity while the playgrounds haven't been used to make improvements. I'm, I literally want to hit the ground running. I've started a public forum on Facebook called Revive Dayton Parks that many members of the community have been involved with. And I continually ask for input to get people involved and use that as kind of a soapbox to deliver the message of that meetings are going to happen and this is when they'll be happening. And please engage with us and interact. As far as a model of inclusive playgrounds, if the closest place to Dayton that you could, that I would say I would model off of is Noah's Playground in Fairhaven. That's just New Bedford. It's on the New Bedford-Fairhaven line. I think that is a good, that it's a larger scale playground, so it might not fit into our community.
You can finish your sentence, Kevin.
It might not fit in our community, but all those attractions that they have at that playground is what I would shoot for.
Thank you very much. And I have one final question from myself. And for the record, my address is 2682 Elm Street in Dayton. And this is directed to the Board of Selectment Candidates. A couple of years ago, it was brought up about bringing Town Hall back to a five-day work week instead of the Monday through Thursday schedule it is on now. My question to the candidates is, are you in favor of Town Hall being open five days per week, Monday through Friday? As you know, many town residents often cannot get to Town Hall because they cannot get there on Fridays. I would like to know what your thought is, please. And Jen, if you would go first.
Sure, I think that there are a lot of factors that play there. We have negotiating bargaining unions that we would need to work with in order to make that change. And I would not be opposed. I do think the expansion of hours is helpful to residents, certainly. As someone who works full-time myself, I understand the challenges in getting to Town Hall while it's open. So if we're able to offer additional hours, that would not be a bad thing. However, I do think that there are some obstacles that we would need to overcome. Alternatively, we could think about how other town offices, like the library that does remain open on Fridays, might be able to help folks on those days. They are already helped with lots of things like passports, but if there are other things that we could explore there to maybe expand access as well.
Thank you. Leonard, if you could respond to the question also, please.
I would be absolutely in favor of it. However, I believe the hours would reduce for budgetary reasons. And if those budgetary concerns could be addressed and resolved, I would truly like to see it open five days a week. It is definitely a need to get creative because more than likely, the expense of opening five days a week will be such that it could impact some other department. Cutting, you know, taking money from one source to put it in an expansion of the hours. So I think it's something we need to talk about. But again, as long as we can overcome the monetary constraints. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so I am going to conclude for the evening. I just want to remind everybody again that the annual town election is being held next Saturday, which is April the 10th, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM at the Dayton Elementary School. If you go in person, please wear a mask and remain distance from everybody. The Friends of the Library thanked the town of Dayton also for allowing us to utilize their Zoom account tonight and utilize their Town of Dayton YouTube channel. And we also wish all of the candidates the best of luck in the upcoming race.
Thank you.
With that being said, have a wonderful night, everybody, and stay safe.
Thank you, Zach.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Zach. Appreciate it. Great job tonight.